Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brookfield, so I'm in the evening of Tuesday, September 11th, 2018. Would you all like it now, I, to join me in public?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic whose stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some approval of some warrants. I would like that to entertain a motion to approve the expense warrant for 9/4/18 for $109,743.93.
Do you want to go together?
Yeah, we'll do them all together. Approve the expense warrant for refunds for 9/14/18 for $1,028.53. Approve the expense warrant for 9/5/18 for $12,943.74. Approve the expense warrant for 9/11/18 for $41,69.58. And approve a payroll warrant for 9/12/18 for $171,834.38.
You have it, Ms. Shear?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Then I would like to have, entertain a motion to accept the 6/19/18 of the executive who, excuse me, the executive sessions meetings that we've had.
You have it, Ms. Shear?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have to approve minutes and reports from other departments. ZBA minutes for June 7th.
And 12.
12th, and July 7th, and the 31st. And Recreation Committee meeting minutes from August 2nd, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Do you have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Announcements. Tyler Wolin, District A for Senator Ann Govey will be holding office hours at the Brookfield Town Hall from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. Wednesday, September 19th. All are welcome. Does anyone else have any announcements?
No, though you probably saw it in correspondence, that the Central Mass Municipal Transportation Authority meeting that the Westbrook Field Selectman, Rich Van Gogh, got voted as the Western Region, Subregion representative, and then Ms. Brink from Hardwood is the alternate. So if we have any concerns about what's currently kind of funded through TIPS, then they provide a contact information. And we should definitely try to keep ourselves on the radar. Like, it was good that, I know that we received a correspondence from Don Taft about the Quaybog Bridge project between us and East Brookfield. And one of the things that came out in discussion during that meeting is that small towns and small-town projects tend to get handed off to contractors to kind of be the leads on. And because they're not big-dollar projects for companies that size, they tend not to get a lot of attention to stay on track and on time and on everything, basically. So their recommendation was to do kind of exactly what we're doing, which is get in contact with the contractor, get in contact with any of the neighboring communities that also have to, like, facilitate the project happening and to make certain that we don't give them any excuses to push the project. So Karen was kind enough to reach out to East Brookfield for us, and they are planning on having a fall meeting, though they don't know when yet. And their annual meeting is in May. So when we get to the warrant articles, one of the things that, we don't have a formal submission yet, but we'd like to, I think we'd be well-advised to put a placeholder on there and...
It is. It's already in there.
Right.
And by the way, when I did talk to Donna Winslow, I ran that by her, and she said she would talk to Selatton about it.
Great. That's fabulous. And just see if they can get it on the hall, because then it's out of the way for everybody, and they don't have an excuse to push it until, like, the end of summer or even next year.
It's a good idea.
Okay.
The first on our agenda is Mr. Cook with bylaw article extract. Mr. Cook, would you like to come up here?
Yeah. Let me run through the list, if you may, and I'll take questions. The first one is the one I actually discussed at the annual town meeting. It's basically, it's a paraphrase of an existing law. It deals with recall of town officers. When I was looking over the bylaws, I noticed there wasn't a recall provision. And Mr. Shiri, who's the councilor, pointed out to me that in 1984, at the, because of the town of Brookfield, the legislature passed a special act. So I think it's, or the Bylaw Committee thought it's important to basically have something in the bylaws which basically paraphrases this.
Now, did you change anything, or is it...
I mean, it's a paraphrase of what the legal, which is why the town council said to me afterward, she would like to make a couple wording changes in this. So I would ask the selectmen, give this to council, whatever changes she wants to make is fine, because the intent was that there's something, you know, because 20 years from now, if someone wants to recall an official, right, how would they know there would be...
We have gone through a recall process.
I know, but that was a while back, but how many people in the next generation are going to know?
Oh, I understand what you're saying, Jim.
So that's why I think it's important we adopt this. So if you would just further this to town council, and whatever council comes back for changes, we'll support.
Mike agrees.
Yeah, it was answered, or what just went?
No, what I'm saying, he says we need it.
Yeah, he said, Mike says that we need this also.
Okay.
I don't have any problem with that. All in favor of pulling the on to the...
Aye.
One?
Sure.
Any second?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Do you have any discussion with it?
No, no. Mike said it's good, it's good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I just number them, just for the second council, and number them?
Maybe I'll add this as the first one, number one. The next one is that to see if the town will vote to add a new bylaw, which if adopted would become Chapter 2, Section 22 of the town bylaw, and read as follows. Prior to setting the tax rate each year, the town of Brookfield must hold a town meeting for the citizens to consider an article on the amount of free cash to be used to reduce the tax rate.
Okay. Again, the byla, let me go back. It used to be past practice in this town at the fall meeting to, the last motion was to, what would we be done with free cash? And usually it was split between stabilization and reduction of the tax rate. We've departed from that practice in the past few years. So basically, all this article would do, it basically puts it on the fall warrant, for all practical purposes. And you could recommend zero, but at least it opens up a discussion of what to do with free cash.
I don't ever remember taking the free cash and putting it to reduce the tax rate.
I do.
You do?
Yep.
Every time you pay something out of stabilization, you're applying money to lower the tax rate.
Because I know a lot of times, the assessors have talked that, you know, it doesn't, you know, we had, didn't we have something that came from Al about how much it would, for this year, how much money you would put, and it actually wouldn't reduce it that much, but the next year you would have to appropriate the money for that.
Yeah, so Al would be opposed to this.
Yeah.
And the CIPC is opposed. I don't know where the advisory board stands.
Aye.
Do you know where the advisory board stands?
Again, I was going to go meet with the advisory board after we determine which ones are going to be on the warrant to make sure they're all going to be there, so then I'll talk to them about the reasons for this. But again, I hate the term "free cash," because it's not really free, it's no free cash. It's really taxpayers' money that's in excess of what was budgeted. So I, they really should have a say. We spend, we debate $50 on expenditure, right?
Absolutely.
So we should really have a debate on what to do with free cash. As I said, if you could, or whoever says the...
Well, I think, and I think this is part of a larger issue, though, as well, because, I mean, financially and structurally, free cash is part of what we, and we haven't historically done a great job of setting financial policy or setting long-term plans. But to your point, free cash also shouldn't be zero. I mean, the intent is to budget within our means, and then it, and that allows for conservative budgeting, right, so that we're not putting ourselves at risk during economic downturns that we won't be able to address core functions, right? But then free cash facilitates, especially if we can stabilize how we plan for the amounts of free cash to come back to the town, which is possible, I mean, not perfect, but you can, you can, to a certain extent, and a number of communities do, plan to hit certain thresholds of having free cash come back, so that you can then reapply at the capital spending without going anywhere near your levy limit. And through, you know, responsible, long-term fiscal planning, that puts you in a position where you stabilize the tax rate and potentially lower the tax rate by design as part of that larger plan. So the one concern I have with this is the, is the risk of kind of breaking that cycle if somebody says, you know what, I'm going to put together a posse and go to town meeting, and we're going to put every dime of it against the tax rate this year. We're just setting yourselves up for some other year with potential negative impact. And I think it's, I think we've finally gotten to a point where we, where we have a, we've reestablished our stabilization appropriately, and we're in a good position overall to where maybe we can do some of those things, but I don't think we should be mandating that it has to be on every fall meeting.
Well, again, philosophically, we debate every appropriation, and what used to happen was the town meeting set the tax rate. And I think it'd be more appropriate to keep this on, so we can have a discussion. Again, what you decide to spend should not be set up by an elite bunch, it should be determined by the taxpayers themselves.
And I don't debate that. Here's where I have a concern with it. There are years when we have no other reason to have a fall special, right? And generally, at least in the last six or seven years, we really haven't had free cash to spend in the fall, in May this year. I would rather see a general bylaw that states that we include this article on every, on every special town meeting warrant, not state that it has to occur prior to the setting of the tax rate that year. So if there's a year that we have, don't have a fall meeting, okay, when we don't have a fall meeting, we probably won't have gotten our free cash back that fall, and there'd be no reason to have the meeting other than because we now have tied our hands and we have this bylaw that says that we have to do it before we set the tax rate. So I would rather see you come back to us, where instead of linking it to the setting of the tax rate, that you just have a bylaw that we always include that article on any special town meeting warrant, because that would cover both the fall and the summer.
Can I borrow your pen? Can I write?
Is that, I mean, do you understand what I'm saying, though? I don't want to link it to the setting of the tax rate.
Anyway, I, I don't have a problem with adding it to the list of things that we want for the town meeting. At the same time, where I'm headed with this is that we have capital improvement, and we have advisory inputs that are needed, and until such times we have those inputs, I don't think that we should use this thing forward.
I know capital improvement was not in favor of it.
I feel the same, what you do.
So I'd make a motion to add this to the, some sort of temporary warrant, or whatever the listing is, add it to the listing, but I think, look to Jim to have inputs from advisory and CIPC, and then we'll see where we want to go. And your input as well, as far as adding it to all, rather than just the one.
I would, I don't, I don't mind seeing it as a, that every special town meeting warrant would include an article with this effect, because then it doesn't force us to have a town meeting prior to setting the tax rate.
But normally, though, we, we do have this a lot of times at the end of the annual also.
Right.
I don't really approve of putting, I mean, I won't go along with this.
Well, and again, my motion would be that we leave it on the temporary list, and we get inputs from the other committees that aren't here. And if we get, we come to consensus, great. If we don't come to consensus, then we'll have the debate on the town hall floor.
Makes sense.
All right.
Okay.
We'll put this as number two.
Two, with a T at the end of it.
Can I pass that down to, with the verbiage change? Or do you want to, I'll copy it, I'll copy your verbiage change on my copy.
You can't, if you could read my handwriting, you're lucky.
All right. Now, the next one here is to see if the town will vote, then Chapter 10, Section 16 of the town's bylaw, and make the following wording changes noted in bold, such that the revised bylaw would read as follows. Don't we have, we do have this already, the curb cut, and don't we have something, it's from the state also?
Yes.
So basically, we already have all of this in place.
Well, let me explain why this came about. The bylaw exists is without the bold, okay? And there are two problems with the bylaw. One is, there is no posted price. So if, I mean, if you go into any restaurant, they'll tell you what the price is for the menu. There is no prior to this bylaw, there is no price, what would it cost me for a bond if I put it in the driveway? The other concern's been raised to me from people is that suppose you put it in the driveway and the highway superintendent signs off on it, well, you have to wait a pretty long time to get your money back. You know, I had a dispute with a vendor the other day, and I had my money refunded in 10 minutes. So, I mean, those are the two key points. This came about after discussion with Mr. Chafee. I, if you see, there's still a variable in here, I really was, to be honest with you, this is a compromise. I would rather say a set fee with a set amount or a percentage amount, but Mr. Chafee argued that there's a lot of variables involved as to what the bond amount should be. So we set some parameters around it. I mean, again, I remain skeptical that we couldn't set a standard fee, but this is what the compromise came to.
So this includes the latest?
I saw your version, and there are other things. Your version that I saw is, is actually what I would consider to be administrative regulation. There's far more details in that than there is in this. Right? There are far more details, which there should be if you adopt administrative regulation on top of a law. The key points, again, are that you need a permit, there's a cost for the permit, it puts down what the fee schedule is, parameters, and it says that, once it's signed off on you get your money back in 90 days. And that's basically the only changes to what is the existing.
You and Mr. Chafee are all in agreement?
I left the meeting believing that Mr. Chafee was in accord.
Okay. Could I remotion that we add this to the...
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
This one will be number three.
And I probably should have said this during the discussion on that. I do want to get confirmation from the highway that the takeaway from that meeting was the same.
Okay.
And kind of reserve the right to revisit it.
Okay. Okay. Now, let's let him know this, because, Karen.
Okay, so where are we now?
This is one of the, to see if the town will vote to add a new bylaw to the town bylaws, which would become Section 20 of Chapter 2, if adopted, and read as follows. Any new fee for town services must be approved by a majority vote at a town meeting before the fee can go into effect. That's already, like, said in master laws also. Any fee that you have, any kind of fees, have to be set at town meetings.
Right. I think in our block votes, that's one of the things that winds up getting granted to us to...
No. Well, we had gone, I remember a few years ago, even I had gone on fees, on fees, the law of town court fees, when I was supposed to take over, and that had come up, and it voted town meeting, and the approval. And then also, when the tax collector, a year ago, wanted to go up on the fees, when she sent out rate notices, that was also approved at town meeting. So any fee has to be approved at a town meeting.
We have comments.
Ms. Shear?
Yeah.
As chair of the planning board, this bylaw will not run by, to my knowledge, any fee charging entities in town for their input. I know the planning board was not consulted. We have significant expenses associated with every special permit. Those expenses are deducted from the fees we set, and in my personal estimation, the fees are underrepresented of the charges that we charge already, that we get charged already from people like the town engineering consultant. So I would, I have not consulted the planning board about this to get their sentence. Speaking personally as the chair, I would at least like to see this run by all of the fee-granting entities for their input. And Linda, I believe that, I haven't consulted the block, because we haven't been notified about this, I haven't consulted the block bylaws, but to my knowledge, if we want to increase our fees, we increase our fees. I've never been told that we have to consult the county.
Well, we, it's more than we have.
So let's, let's put this on the list with a T, and have the fee-setting agencies, committees, feedback to Mr. Cook, as to their inputs.
I know, I got the good permission under the tax...
And I'm not saying committee, I'm just saying that Sharon brings up a very good point when it comes to, especially the planning board.
If it, Linda, if you're correct on state law, I would ask town council, because you should probably note, again, the MGL chapter at the end of this.
Okay.
Yeah, because this, so ask them if you, we used to do that in the school committee, we would just say, MGL, is per MGL, whatever the statute is.
That's what I was looking for. I wasn't just ignoring your...
Oh, okay. I would just add that, because again, there are many of the town bylaws, if you read them, are regurgitations or paraphrases of state law.
Do you want one that's by town?
And I don't see anything wrong with that, because people don't know state law, right?
Okay.
And they would look at the town meeting, and again, I don't think the bylaw should be a complete listing of what the state law is, you should reference it. So if there may be other provisions in that, that I don't know of, I'm not a lawyer, but anybody can read that, plain English.
But again, I think Sharon brings up an excellent point, especially with developments and developers and the like, that we really need to make sure we're covering that, because I don't think we are, just need to...
So we'll put that on, also, with the temporary... Okay. The next one is to see if the town will vote to add a new bylaw, setting a regular date for the annual town meeting, and which is adopted would become Chapter 21, Section 2 of the bylaws, and read, the annual town meeting would be held on the second Wednesday in June of each year. If I remember back at the annual, Mr. Holcraft had put a, had put a box out, and let people put their input in a box, and then we, I know they were countered after, and people wanted stuff with Fridays.
Yeah. Now, granted, they self-select, because the people that showed up on Fridays probably prefer Fridays.
That's, that's right.
Okay. But...
You do the survey Friday.
It's not like you do the survey at town. Let me, let me raise an overall issue. When I first moved into this town 30 years ago, and we held town meetings upstairs, it was packed, and the average age was 40, okay? And they said, we're going to have to, we're getting so crowded, we're going to invoke the fire marshal. We have to build a new elementary school and hold our meetings there. Since we've moved over there, the average age has risen to 60 for those in attendance, and it's nowhere near the amount of people who should show up. Now, there's a host of factors, I think, and this only addresses one of them, so this is not a magic bullet, by any means. But I think, if you want to attract more people, you're going to have to do a couple, you're going to have to move in to dates that's not a Friday or Saturday. I mean, there was some debate within the committee, whether we pick Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, or Monday, but we settled on a Wednesday. The other thing I think you have to do is you have to, which we used to have, was that the town meeting used to be held after the annual election. You have to set a date so people know in advance, right? So they can plan things, oh, I know, the annual town meeting will always be, whatever it is, the second Wednesday of June. And by the way, why you picked the second week of June was this. Tantasco always holds their graduation the first week of June. So you wanted to avoid that hurdle, and you wanted to have the town meeting before everybody schoollets out, which is usually around the third week of June, right? And there's activities then. So we picked, so the reasoning behind this was to pick a date when people would not take off with their kids on vacation, right? But would miss the two end-of-year activities at the elementary and end-of-year of the high school. So that's the reasoning behind this.
For as long as I remember, annual town meetings were on Fridays. And we always did have one, we did have them upstairs, it was always a packed house.
But I think times have changed, Linda, with working couples and people driving long distances.
But why do you say Wednesday would be better? I commute an hour every day to my job. Do we get the last thing I personally want to do? Okay, if you want to, and I'm, I hate to put this way, I may be the only person at this table who's a 40-something, okay? The last thing I want to do, okay, is to rush back here on a Wednesday night, go to a three-hour town meeting, and have to get back on the road at 7:00 in the morning to get into my job the next day.
Well, I would think most people get Friday off, they want to go off and celebrate as a...
You know what? This is where I'm just old enough, I get home and I am happy to be there. At least on a Friday night, I know that if I go to a town meeting, I could sleep in as long as the dogs let me on Saturday.
Well, again, I would ask that goes, because we can always shoot this down. I think what really needs to be done is put a survey in a Brookfield citizen and ask people what they want to do.
I, we can, we can do that.
That, I think, is what really needs to be done. Because that, that would determine what the majority were, that you could bring this back, and if it was, I don't know.
We can probably, next, one for next citizen.
I mean, if you want, I'll hold this. If you want to do a survey, I will say we'll withdraw this and bring this back for the annual. I still think it should be, again, my reasoning on the second week of June, I think, unless you want to move it to the last week.
No, second week works, it's just that...
Yeah.
Okay. I will hold this pending the results of the survey.
I'd even be, I'd even be willing to get the bylaw to change it to, that it be held in the second week of June, not specify a day, and, because I think it is, the way it's currently phrased, I don't see us doing a town meeting with as late as the state gets their numbers out every year. We're still even holding our town meeting before we finalize what our state aid is going to be. I, I don't have any objection to at least moving the town meeting out of May, where we're always doing an exception to the bylaw.
We've been moving that in May for quite a few years.
Is to go ahead and put it in the second week of June, because that would at least make it predictable, to your point, right?
Right.
And then we can always wrangle it in.
The way I feel also, say, if free cash doesn't get certified.
Right.
And we don't have free cash, then we should, I mean, I think we should wait, what, this year we had, what was it, the third week?
Fourth.
It was the fourth.
Yeah, so what we did is, yeah.
But it's a practical matter, Linda, anyway. You're going to have to have two, two annual town meetings, there's so much on the warrant.
Oh, sure.
The first meeting's going to be going through the stand, like the school budget and the fire budget, and then you're probably going to have to bring it back to the final week of June, because, right, we started this whole process when the state wasn't doing their job and getting a state aid on time.
Well, I like the idea of what we did do, because of the issues that we had with finances and whatnot getting set up. We did, we did paperwork, basically, for the first night, and then we did finances the second night, and it actually seemed to work. So to kind of think about that practice is not a bad idea either.
I, I thought that was a good idea, what we did this year.
It worked.
Yeah, it worked much better than having everything on in one night.
Well, just, so I think I will hold this, let the results of the survey, talk to the committee. If it comes back Friday, we'll, I mean, we'll set it as Friday in the second week of June, but we'll hold it, wait the results of the survey, and...
Are you going to check with Linda?
I will check with Linda or Karen as to when the results come in, which, if you do it, so I'm going to wait for the survey results.
So who's doing the contacting Linda first?
Just now, you want to contact Linda first, or I can, she's not here right now, but...
Yeah, I don't think there's going to be an October addition or issue, is there?
Yeah, she was getting it done. Yes, that's done, so the October 15th, we do the early, we get the survey in.
Do you want, I mean, except for, do you want to just outright ask a question?
Do you want, I mean, except, do you want to just outright ask a question, or do you want to give them certain days to choose from?
It's gonna cost probably, it's gonna cost probably, just so that everybody's aware, it's gonna cost what probably about, and especially it depends on how we do it. We can do a sheet of paper with a rip-off survey that people can either drop back off at the town hall, or mail back in, or if we did it as a postcard insert, but then, you know, the postage and all that. So are we doing something, because it costs a couple hundred bucks either way to do eighteen hundred copies.
And I suppose they can't do a Survey Monkey form, can they?
Yeah, they could, couldn't they?
Well, we could.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Right, we could, I mean, the, the thing that I was...
See, if you did a Survey Monkey form, they could just run an announcement, and there's really no money.
Right, but then the...
Thinking it's a fiscal conservative, I mean.
Right, but a lot of people complaining we don't make stuff accessible, and you can only do it online.
I, well, you raise a good point, so they're still...
But I think, ask, would you ask Linda? And, and just have a tear off on one of her pages, that you check and you can tear off...
Oh, yeah, tear off on one of her pages?
Tear off one of her pages, but, to Jim's point, have the Survey Monkey location there, so that we have two sets of data.
Two sets of data, right.
Set of dates. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And then I'll check back with, I'll send you something. I'm, Karen, I'll just email you something, that'd be real easy, this...
Okay.
Linda's away, anyway, so...
So we should come back.
And...
We'll run it by her and see what she says.
We'll go forward with that, based on those results.
Yeah, I can set up the Survey Monkey if you want.
Okay.
If you're familiar with it. Yeah, I'm very familiar with it.
I used to do it all the time, but I don't have a company account, so I don't know.
Okay, so we're all set?
We're all set, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim, for coming in.
We'll see you later.
I'm sure.
I'm sure.
We're here. Good night.
Our next one is for United Engineering, it's an invoice, and the total of the invoice is three thousand one hundred ninety dollars, and I would like approval for the board to sign it.
Motion to sign.
I'll second, but for discussion, what, what exactly is the work for that?
Roadwork.
What is it?
It's roadwork.
Right there in the front twenty, it says.
Oh. Okay, this is a town of Brookfield from the CMRPC, it's for Hain.
Oh, it's for Hain, okay, so it's part of CBDG work.
Yes, that's what it is.
Okay, awesome.
And the next one is, who, it's an award, the architect contract for this senior center project. Following the recommendation of the project review committee, composed of members of the CBG Advisory Board and selected members of Town Hall Improvement Committee, some of whom have had roles, including on the Council on Aging and Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing Official. I recommend the award of the project to the firm of Clock and Green Incorporated, Great Barrington, Mass., which has been identified as the top-ranked finalist for the Brookfield Senior Center Architectural Design RFQ under Mass. General Law Chapter Seven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I should have stood if there any discussion on it.
Well, they did a thorough job of appropriately running the RFP process. It's good to see that moving along.
My next one, we have wage authorization. So I can read them all off, and we can, we can vote on it, okay. Uh, this is for Kathy LaRocque, grant writer facilitator, hourly rate of twenty-four fifty, and after that, it would be after twenty, ninety days, she would get twenty-five. Uh, the next one is for Herb Foley, cemetery caretaker, and proposed rate would be fifteen dollars an hour.
Now, some of those, by the way, are leftovers of the COLA bases that people didn't submit, so some of those are...
Okay, all right. The next one is for Robert Wall, he's the plumbing and gas inspector. Monthly, he gets three hundred and four, forty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents, and that's with the two-point-five COLA added on. And then the same, Jeffrey Taylor, building inspector, monthly he, it's one thousand four hundred and four dollars and eight cents, and that's also with the COLA in it. And this, Sarah Perdue, that's what Sarah likes to name. She's the animal control, she gets five hundred and six dollars and thirty-three cents, and that's also with the COLA. And then it's Scott Mansfield, a wire inspector, he gets three forty-five seventeen a month, and that's with the COLA also. The next one is for Gary Lapine, and monthly he gets three hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-two cents, and that's also with the COLA. And the tax collector, her present salary is forty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars, plus her thousand-dollar certification bonus. Okay, and this is now for Brendan Mettiville, who's a library director, and she, that was from her. And this is for the employee, Michelle Taylor, who's a library assistant substitute. And the proposed hour with the COLA of fourteen dollars and twenty-six cents. And this is another one for Arthur Putman, he's the custodian, and it's a COLA, and it's thirteen dollars and forty-seven cents. And this one is for Kate Simpson, who's a senior library assistant, hourly salary is fourteen ninety-three. And for Julia Taylor, who's also a library assistant, and it's fourteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. And this one is for Carrie Van Hope, who are thirteen dollars and thirty-three cents. She's a library assistant. And then Holly Simpson, a library assistant, is thirteen dollars and seven cents. And this is for Brendan Mettiville, and it's for twenty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. I would like to motion to accept all of these...
Motion to accept.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I think she doesn't have any place for us to sign.
Please, sorry.
Our next one on the agenda is to adopt a driveway permit regulations.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Just the biggest thing that's in there is the individuals that are going to take those permits out, are going to sign that they've approved and accept that document.
I know, I, I read through it, and I think...
They're not gonna have any more mistakes.
Manager, could you read that? Could you read that, um...
Do you want me to read it in its entirety?
You want it read in the entirety?
Well, how big is it? So the people know, and so, yeah, it's a big change, is it? How likely is it?
It's four minutes.
Tell us the main parts of it, anyway.
I can scan, please scan it, and I'll hit the high points.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so basically, the first portion of it is to get into definitions, what's a street, what's the purpose? Purpose is basically to clarify our driveway permit regulation, and to ensure that when they're constructed, that they don't adversely affect traffic and the public roadway. Uh, it, it states that a permit to make a driveway is a requirement, okay? And that it has to be approved by the Town of Brookfield Highway Superintendent, who is already designated in our bylaws as the permitting authority.
Probably, as we back to definitions and whatnot, this is not something we invented. This reflects Mass. General Law.
Right, this is, this is just a, right, because the authority, it's, it's under Chapter Ten, Section Sixteen of our bylaws, and also Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three, G, G one half, so, um, or G one and two, I apologize. So, it, it states the range of the security for single curb cuts, which is fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars, depending on the complexity and the location, and the risk to having adverse effect on the roadway. Um, it talks about if there was some sort of default, that the funds are used for the, for the, to redress the, any issues that are caused by an inappropriate curb cut. Uh, it talks about the application process very specifically. It talks about what type of plan needs to be included with the curb cut application, and it talks about the non-fundability of the application fee. Um, it also talks a little bit about what, proof of compliance with any other laws, so if there needs to be either the ConCom or Planning Board or zoning board of appeals approval, that that has to be provided at the time of the permit request. Release of the deposit is once that the work has been completed, the individual notifies the highway superintendent and schedules time for inspection, so long as it, so long as it meets the minimum standards of the work, then the superintendent notifies the applicant and the town treasurer for people to get their money back. Okay, construction guidelines, it talks about the final discretion with regards to the application is with the highway superintendent, and that the, and then it provides general guidelines of how that curb cut and how that driveway needs to be, that it should minimize traffic conflict for both pedestrians and vehicles, that it meets all of our zoning bylaws, that it has appropriate grade, and that when it gets to the street, it's at an appropriate level to not impact the continuity of the shoulder. Um, it talks about how surface water runoff should be planned for. Um, it talks about the minimum amount of paving that, that has to be done about ten feet from the edge of the street surface. Uh, and then, if a covert pipe is required by the superintendent, it needs to be installed. Uh, and that the highway superintendent may give other conditions if so long as it's consistent with the overall theme of these requirements. And then it provides an actual procedure for when somebody is in default, and how that default is defined. It includes that if the, that the work has to be done within two years of the date of issuance, it can be considered in default if both the applicant and the highway superintendent agree that they're just not there, and then sixty days written notice from the highway superintendent if the inspection under Paragraph Seven doesn't meet with the Paragraph Eight requirements.
Why do we have a change in this? Why are we making a change on this now?
I'm not sure I'm aware.
Yeah, we're aligning ourselves with, with the, the law as it currently stands.
I don't, do you think two years is long enough?
I think it's more than long enough. From the time that you requested a permit.
There's different holdups in buildings and different things that go on, you know?
So then you reapply for another permit, and it'll cost you twenty-five dollars every two years to keep your permit open. I don't think that's an unreasonable burden.
Then they're gonna request another bond?
I'm sorry? Well, well, if you close out your permit, so it says there that you can actually close out your permit if you, if you contact... Well, it's not really an extension, so you would close out that permit, and then you would reapply. You'd get your bond back, and then you can reapply.
Okay.
And it all falls under Mass. General Law.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's, yeah, that's true.
And we're gonna have somebody sign their name at the bottom before it, before it work even begins.
Yep.
And how fast is it, the deposit gets returned?
That's not defined in there?
It's not?
No.
I think it should be, should be, should be defined how soon you can get your deposit back if it's, everything's in order.
Well, we have two things that are...
Well, let me just double-check, because I saw something that said sixty days, but I don't know if that's the, I don't know if that's the answer to that question or not. And I don't remember off the top of my head. I don't want to say it's not there, I think it's on the third page.
I think it's on the third page, okay, something about... Oh, it says sixty days following written notice. It says here, um, "Default of a highway superintendent may declare an application in default and apply application security funds to complete work authorized by the permit issued to that applicant under the regulations in the following instances." And, uh, Section C says, "Sixty days following written notice from the highway department that work inspected pursuant to Paragraph Seven herein is unacceptable or incomplete where the applicant has failed to adequately, adequately address the concerns of the highway superintendent by either correcting or finishing the work, or arranging for the work to be corrected or finished by that date to the highway superintendent." Doesn't say anything about, about returning.
Well, we talked earlier this evening that we have, we have a second, separate document that's overshadowed.
That's what that sixty days is.
It says sixty days.
Oh, that's correct, it's right here, isn't it?
Yeah, so, it needs to be in one place or the other, it doesn't need to be invoked.
I'm sorry, it's in the bylaw, says it'll be returned within ninety days.
So we are going to, did we talk about doing that one too?
We had talked about whether we really needed it, and I think we did say to go ahead and put it on.
Well, the problem is, yeah, and I did, I asked Mr. Cook too, because I said, you know, there's no need for a day about this, and he's insisted, he wanted to submit it again. He said that it didn't address every...
Right, and, and actually, and that's a good point, so...
And Herb and he are in agreement.
Right, and, and this does align with the fees that's in there, because I think it said fifteen hundred or twenty-five hundred, correct?
Fifteen to twenty-five hundred.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Whatever's to the monies that don't get reclaimed, what has happened to all that money that's in an S4 account of some sort, where all the monies have not been distributed back to the people who paid deposits on driveway cuts? So someone does, someone doesn't come back, get the deposit, which has happened many times. So someone doesn't come back, get their deposit, which has happened many times, you just have to believe what has happened. What are we doing with those monies?
They're probably still in that, sitting in that account.
Yeah. Not going anywhere.
I'm sure that that's where they are.
Does it have to be used to finish the driveway? Or you're saying that they finish it?
Oh, and they finish it and then they don't come in and say that they want their money back. Well, it just stays in that account. I know it's a separate account, it's like an escrow account. And they just get-
Nobody will notify them saying, hey, you forgot to get your deposit back?
No, I-
I mean, I wouldn't forget 15,000, but I know there's a big pile of money in there, I'm just wondering. Okay? Just stay there.
It's just there.
Just one point of order about this, is that the regulation says 1,500 or 2,500, this says 1,000 or 2,500. Can we just align this with what the document says?
Yeah.
And that's what we agree to.
Yeah.
Karen, that should be-
Is it a change? Do you have, I guess you want to go to change it, I guess. Well, would you vote to place them on?
For more places.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Now, our next one is to review articles for special town meeting. Okay.
Can I start by adding one that wasn't submitted? And I apologize, Karen, I meant to get beyond this, and it's my bad for not communicating it. One thing that came to my attention when negotiating the police contract is that our chief, the gap between our chief's salary and what the base salary is for the sergeant is actually less than, like, I think it's only like a 6% difference. Typically, there's between a 12 and a 15% difference between sergeant and what, and frequently, it's more than that. But it's what's considered an industry standard, is a minimum of 12 to 15% difference between what the sergeant's salary is and what the chief's salary is. Now, he's on a separate contract that's negotiated. But what I think would be an appropriate thing is to take it to the town meeting and ask for an additional $9,000 for the chief for this year's salary. And if it gets approved at town meeting, then reopen his contract negotiations and go ahead and adjust his base salary to, so that we're paying him in a way that is aligned with what's considered usual and customary vis-à-vis the folks that he's supervising. Could we add that, even though I didn't fill out a form as a special town meeting warrant article, just to-
Yeah, I don't have no problem with that.
And the way we would phrase it is to just change the funding level of that particular line of the budget. And then I can light up a little fluid about it.
All right, so what is it? You want to just send me an email or-
I will send you an email.
Chief's summary.
Okay.
That's important.
That would be number five.
That would be five.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next one here is from the highway department, to see if the town will vote to transfer or borrow a sum of money for additional tree removal or take any action, and the sum is $10,000.
We definitely need to have this.
Yes, we do. Down here, they said there are a large number of trees which are hazardous and needed to be removed. And it said this money will allow us to hire a tree removal company for additional days, and they have, they had a list included on here.
So the, one, we need to add this. So, that's the same.
Oh, yeah, that's quite a few. It's 237 trees plus 10%.
And we're using, we're still doing about the 90% a year. So, the other thing that I learned the other day is that they've now identified the loss of the white oaks to the caterpillar and drought. And so there is, or there may be some monies that we can go after to supplement our town budget.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, that's good news.
Yeah, so it's going to happen, it's just a matter of watching for when the money can come.
Okay, so we should make Kathy aware then?
It's really sending.
Oh, is it sending?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like, I'd like a motion to approve of this.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
On favor? This is number six. I've been putting it here. Okay. This is another one, also from highway, to see if the town will vote to purchase, transfer or borrow some money to purchase safety equipment for the highway department for $2,700.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
This is number seven. Now, this is another one from the highway. It's to see if the town will vote to transfer or borrow a sum of money to purchase a generator for the highway garage in the amount of $39,000. And we had here-
And that was-
Yeah, in the, yeah, I saw that. The CIP, they agreed, agreed to that.
They did.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number eight.
This is eight. Okay. And this is another one from the highway, to see if the town will vote to transfer some of money from available funds to the fleet repair replacement account. And the amount would be $11,676.78, and it says that this money was obtained through due diligence of the highway department as follows. $2,750 from the sale of the 1980 MAP truck, $4,900 from the sale of the 1970 Ford, $326.78 from the sale of scrap metal, and $3,700 from the sale of the 77th MAP.
Motion to approve.
I'll second, yeah, I'll second for discussion. And actually, they concurd to go ahead and add this, but what they specified during the meeting, and I think it's actually a good discussion to have, is that back, I think it was like six years ago now, when we established the fleet repair and replacement account, the definition of it kind of got away from the town. Okay? In that people, we started transferring monies for new vehicles into this account, and then, you know, different interpretations of what goes in and how had come around. And what they asked was that if we feel we want some amount of money regularly put into it in order to have kind of a buffer, so that we're not over allocating to the department's funds for unexpected maintenance, like what's going on with the cruiser, right? Okay? That we put an article first on the town meeting warrant that is, you know, a sum of money, probably we determine, you know, after we have a discussion with advisory and CIPC, somewhere between maybe 15,000, $20,000, that goes in there to handle, you know, emergency extingencies and like small equipment secondary market purchase, okay? But leave this on there so that if people get like angry about, well, why are we doing this? We don't have it programmed exactly why we have this money, that we leave the highway one on there. Also to say, look, we're just trying to ensure the funds are available, that we did our due diligence with on the stuff that we turned in. And then, very comfortable with the concept of passing this one over, so long as in the more programmatic, this is how we're doing the financial town planning, that if that one passes, great, and then we just pass over the one from the highway. And make it clear that there's like kind of a vision and a plan for how we're managing that account and what the intent is for it. So, I would, I would concur with them, you know, from a standpoint of, I don't have a problem with this going on, but I'd like whatever, I think we'd be up to seven, is, what number are we up to?
This is going to be number nine.
Okay, so actually, number nine would be a generic fleet repair replacement account one, and then this would be number 10. With the understanding that we would pass over this if the generic one passed.
If you read what they wrote in the book, they said that the article should request 15 to 20,000, is that what you're saying?
Yes. And that that should come from either like free cash, or from raising appropriate, or some other fund source, other than doing a transfer from the general fund of these monies that have come back this year.
Okay, well, we can find two men and a lady, but we'll put them-
Yeah, but we would need two, because one of them would be from some other source.
Right, so now nine would be the fleet, and the one we're adding, the fund fleet, and the 10 would be the highway, 11,000.
Yep.
Okay, so that's going to be number 10.
And then this, then the other one-
Number nine is going to be the fleet, fund, and, yeah.
The generic one, yeah.
So this is nine.
Okay.
And then, and then 10 is the highway one.
Oh, so one with the 11,000 is 10?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right. The next one is to increase the zoning board of, CEO's annual salary from $7,392 to $11,000. Salary was $9,777 until 2016, when Mr. Comtoire recommended to a reduction due to the changing in personnel. This, this, I can't, what's that?
This office has increased workload.
Oh, this office has increased workload to 20 hours per week.
20 plus hours. Yeah, he did go, Mr. Tomo went to the personnel committee meeting and they agreed, they approved it, yes.
Oh, sure.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So this would be 11. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer or borrow some of money to purchase a fire vehicle or take any action relative to it.
When the CIPC does recommend placement.
My question is, I know that they talked about, I was surprised when I saw that they had approved it, because I thought they wanted to wait till next fiscal year and have white oaks.
So if you note, they very specifically talked about the timeline, and what they're stating is that they support it provided that it wasn't purchased prior to February. Because then what that will allow for is that the first interest payment would be due in 2020 fiscal. And also, in talking with Monica, we would have the opportunity actually to roll this into the same bond issue or the same borrowing that we do for the police station. So what that would allow us to do is not have the funding fees, because Clark Robb got back to her, and we wouldn't wind up doing any type of a funding fee in order to do this, this bond individually. So it puts us in a stronger position to go ahead and do it at much lower cost, if we go ahead and approve it now, so we can time it and cycle it with the police station. So from that perspective, we wouldn't actually pay it until fiscal '20. So, in essence, by approving it now, it puts us in a position that aligns with the original capital plan.
Because doesn't, doesn't, whenever this comes up, isn't it every year, like the police station that we have?
Correct.
So this could go and be-
It would go, it would be a one-year rotating, it would be on the same, it would be on the same note, basically.
Okay.
So.
And this requires, say, two-thirds vote.
It would require a two-thirds vote.
And I see that the cost too has gone up from 200,000, and they don't suggest that the figure go over 280.
Correct.
It's up there.
Okay, so, so how old, the chief is here, so just use him. You want to come up here?
Aye.
Have you got one? Have you been looking? Have you found?
I haven't found, but we are monitoring the market and used apparatus, and that's what led to just discussion on increase over it, is to get something with a timeframe that it can still last for us. I mean, we shouldn't be using much in frontline service over 20, 25 years, so now we're able to really expand on that and look at it. And this also, the cost during the CIPC meeting included, if we need, if we choose to go and look at this vehicle, obviously, we're not going to drive to Eugene or going to look at one, we'll try to stay obviously closer. And if there's any equipment that is, that is needed for that truck, that can't be brought over from the 88, so there's some things on that. But I think 280 runs about half of what a brand new truck was, depending on what thought process you have, the old idiom of, well, as soon as you drive it off a lot, it loses so much, then we're in a better position to get a truck that we're not immediately going to have to start looking, you know? Once this truck comes in, the light at the end of the tunnel is a lot, lot less than, we don't need to immediately start thinking about it.
Right, both Peter and I have done some independent market research, and both got numbers that ranged anywhere from, if we're really lucky, it's still possible we could stay under 200 if we happen to find the right truck. But the, the way that the market is to try to get something that's, that's less than 12 years old, we really, I mean, bare minimum is probably going to be 240. To put it at 280 gives us just a little bit of room to, if we find a six-year-old truck at like, because every once in a while, you'll see like a six, a six-year-old truck at like 265, right? So that's a truck that we could get 19 years out of if we go with about 25-year, you know, service.
We start using that one.
So, so that's a price range where it gives us some, we can either get like a higher quality truck that's a little bit older, or one that's like a brand, is not kind of as fancy a brand, but newer, and it gets us into a sweet spot in the market where we have a good chance of getting a much younger truck. And I mean, long-term, that's a better choice for the, for the town, so.
I would vote to put, I'd like a motion to vote to put this on the line.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is number 12.
Number 12.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
And I'll send you the PowerPoint presentation that we took a bunch of his educational notes and like the Asian equipment, and provided to Karen as well, so that you all have it. And if we want to have copies of it at town meeting, we could probably provide it to people, so they understood what we have in the fleet and what we're replacing and that sort of thing.
And the next one is to allow a priority or payroll payment to the conservation committee clerk of $165.
Yep, she didn't send her payroll until FY19 or FY18, so she couldn't get paid.
Yeah. Motion to approve.
All in favor? I'll second it. I'm sure this is going to probably need two-thirds vote.
Yes.
Something like that. And this is one from the town for create a new job description known as transfer station manager or take any other action to it, too.
Now, Linda, again, that was the one that I did talk about, and I asked him to get together a job description, and that the job description has to be approved at town meeting, but this is how he gave it to me, and he's going to get the job description later, and he didn't think it had to be approved at town meeting.
It has to, and it has to be also, because we have to add it to classification and the personnel.
Right, I know, but she's going to submit it to the personnel board, but he just questioned why it had to be approved at town meeting.
It has to, because, because it's going to be station manager.
Okay, so what we're going to have to do is get a job description and put it, if you want to vote on it, then we'll get a job description, make sure he gets it to us before-
Yeah.
Well, that's funny, he's the same person that said to hire a meeting clerk, we would need to take it in front of town meeting, and he's asking us why we're asking for the same thing.
Yeah, this has to go.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
We have to put a rate of salary on this, too.
I asked him then, he said they didn't have one yet. We'll try to get some-
So what's the justification behind this?
I don't know. He just told me that they decided they needed one. They decided they needed transfer station manager. This is for the board help.
Well, say for an example, I know other times that they voted to have different members of the board be-
Yeah, I'd like, I mean-
Key for temporary.
Yeah, actually, can you just invite Mike to our next meeting to talk about it?
I'm 14, but 13 is conservation clerk.
Oh, okay, this is 14. Oh, yeah, because-
Yeah, and we have Mike, or you can just send you guys individual emails if you want to start it off like that.
That's fine.
Let's do that.
But I mean, but still, we have to go over it and put a stepping rate on this.
He knows that, he's going to the personnel board.
Okay, now, what is this one?
He spoke about Cambridge.
Yes, this is a placeholder. You read the email that's with this, this is, if you're familiar with it, I know. This is what they suggest. They, in order to, they want the town to acquire the land parcels, or the rights in land parcels for the right of way.
So, it looks like it's all ours and then state land. So how are we supposed to acquire the state land? Do they have any recommendations?
Well, Mass DOT, like I said, this is what they gave us, and if you read the email, she said that she does plan to send along some more information, but she had a full plan set, should be in soon, she'll send us.
Yep.
So she asked, specifically said placeholder, so I'm sure- So she asked, specifically said placeholder, so I'm sure she's reading those more as well.
Absolutely, so.
This is basically our stuff in the states.
Yes, our stuff in the states, so.
That's the news.
Yeah, that's the really good news, right? So.
So we'll put this one on as well.
Who has the best relationship with Fish and Wildlife? Or is that a funny question to ask? Where I have no relationship, do I have the best relationship with them?
So where we are, is that we have things that are owned by wildlife that should be owned by D C R, and we have things owned by D C R that should be owned by wildlife, and there needs to be, as we do our open space plan activity later this year and into early next year, that needs to be on the agenda, things that we need to work on.
Yes, okay.
So let Karen for now be, but if you need something, Karen, let me know.
Yeah, at least reach out to them, and, yeah.
Okay, so we'll put this on also?
Yep.
It's fifteen?
It's going to be number fifteen, that's going to be the last one, too.
People thought we didn't need to do, we've got an awful lot of stuff on it already.
Yeah. Do you want these also, Karen, or you want to just leave it here?
I have mine, maybe you have still some, sure have others.
Okay. Give those to you all, so. All right, next, so that's all that we want to put on, and I don't know if it's a possibility, if we come across something else, we can reopen it before then. So as of now, town special is closed. All right, and now, anything under other, I don't.
Oh, under other, I have two quick things, if that's okay.
Okay, because I don't see anything.
One is that, I just forwarded it to Karen, I apologize, I got it last night, and I forgot to forward it. I got some correspondence from Rudy Heller. He expressed a concern that we haven't currently been making a lot of movement towards getting forty B compliant, and that it could put us at risk with developers to, you know, inflict some non-desirable type of developments on us in order to get affordable housing in town. And he, he offered himself as at least a founding member of, and asked that we try to form a committee related to coming up with at least a plan around forty B housing, specifically, perhaps take advantage of some of the property, either where we've recently demolished some of the derelict houses, and some of those were in tax title, I believe, so the property may be coming back to us, is that even if they're non-compliant lots, so long as they were rebuilt within two years, then we have the potential to go ahead and place potentially some, some, you know, deeded, lower income housing, and we might be able to work something out with even Ten Task, where to make it like their class project to build a small home on, on like, whether it's one of those properties, or whether it's a property that's already gone through tax title. If we show even the smallest movement in activity towards obtaining the state goal, then it puts us in a much stronger position to set a firm line with developers about what we will and won't allow with certain types of developments.
But something too like this, I mean, we do have a housing authority here in town, so.
We do.
But.
It hasn't hardly met, though, and it hasn't been horribly active, and I think it's, this is more of like a steering committee, or like.
Because they're usually basically the ones that go after, you know, that go after the monies and the grants for the housing, so maybe we should have this committee injunction with them.
Have Rudy go stir it up a little bit.
Yeah, have Rudy go, find out, have him call a meeting, I don't even know who's on the committee anymore.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not certain.
That'd be a good, good thing to do.
Yeah, I think they should, you know, he should go and find out, and go to a meeting and call one.
Or call one, yeah.
That's what I think they should do.
Do you, do you have on record who's currently on our housing authority?
I don't know, I want to say Mike Siri.
Is Mike still on?
I think Jennifer Brubisky was in the past, I don't know.
But she's not even, I think it's vacant.
I don't even know that it's still active anymore.
Well, so, so the thing of it is, is that it's, it's there, okay? I don't think they, I don't think the state has, has allocated their person to it. It may be that if there's a vacancy, we're actually obligated to appoint somebody, and maybe the answer is, we say, hey, Rudy, you said that you were interested in pushing this, would you accept the appointment to the housing authority? And will you start pushing them to reconvene, and then we can work with that entity to come up with this, this affordable housing plan?
Right.
And Linda, doesn't, don't we work with the Oxford Housing?
No, I thought North Brookfield took.
So Mike had been talking about trying to consolidate it, but he's been very inactive in actually addressing that, so it may be time to get some fresh blood involved.
I don't know if, I was under the understanding Oxford did it for a while, but I thought North Brookfield took it over, because they have a new director up there, because we don't have, we didn't have a director.
We talked about, or I had heard word that we, we, Brookfield's housing authority, not me, like me, was, was considering consolidating with North Brookfield, I don't think any official activity ever occurred.
But I know, when I was on it, I've been off for a couple of years, two, three years now, and I know that Oxford had taken it over.
So we just need to find out.
Oh, sure.
So if Rudy wants to pull the thing together.
I think Rudy should try to pull it together with the housing authority.
And if there's a vacancy, then maybe, if we're the appointing authority, when it's, when it's not filled by election, perhaps that's what we do, is we appoint him to it, and then ask him to kind of be our advocate to get something moving from him.
And I know for years also, I was, there's a state appointee also, somebody, you know, that we'd be communicating, and nobody's ever come up, we haven't had anybody to do that in years.
We may have to agitate to get the state to appoint their representative.
No, 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 it's an appointee on the housing authority.
No, I understand, but we might have to agitate with the state to get them to appoint their person.
We need to do it.
Yeah, we do, we need to do something. So I know there's so many people, I feel bad, so many people here in Brookfield, they've lived here all their lives, they're elderly, and it's a shame, we don't have housing, and they move out, they move in one community.
There's no choices. They lost another one in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, it's too bad.
And then, I was wondering if we wanted to at least send an inquiry to the recreation committee formally, or if you want me to informally reach out to them? I didn't want to do it without talking to y'all for it first, about getting a more comprehensive plan around the maintenance at South Pond, the beach. I know that they did that great cleanup day, I think they did phenomenal work, but one of the things, and I think he sent a note to all, to the, to Karen, but I got a copy of the now expired lease between us and Fish and Wildlife regarding the property. And I don't know what y'all feel about how to approach that, if, if you think we need to get back into negotiations with Fish and Wildlife to get at least an updated lease, and then also work with rec committee to see if they want to add some members specific to the management of the beach, and to meet in the lease requirements.
They did just recently ask them for copies of, of the lease and other payroll, which I did provide a couple of months ago, they were working on, I think on renegotiating and.
Because the, yeah, because the rec commission, they always took care of the beach, and it was nice.
And Ian's got some energy to pull this thing together, so that would be at least a good exchange of emails to start.
Do you have his email handy?
I've got it, I can give it to you. I got his phone.
Okay.
But yeah, I would, I would grab Ian, because that, so if we could expand this just a little bit more.
Yep.
We're going to be working on something related to open space in December, where Ian needs to be a vital part of that conversation as well. You noticed that I did not have the campground in here. Met with the historical commission the other night, and we agreed to pull throttle back on any activity related to Mass Historical as far as grants or whatever, because what happens is there's some park money, park grant money, that may be available, and that's a hundred percent money, rather than fifty percent money. So if we can align ourselves, it's a better idea.
That'd be great.
So, anyway, long story short, I would say if Beth would get a hold of Ian, that would be great.
Yeah, I absolutely follow on that.
And get the ball started, because once you have that, that's going to plow into the open space activity.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry for all the drop-ins, I appreciate everyone's patience.
All right, we all set, we're going to correspondence?
Yep.
Okay, we have a recycling grant notice from the governor's office. We were awarded a grant of three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars from the Sustainable Material Recovery Program, and that came from the governor's office. And we have another one here from Chata Communications, but upcoming lineup, effective on October 1st, 2018, N B A League Pass will be added to H D Pay Preview for seasonal sport package, and then effective on October 1st, 2018, Newsmax H D will be launching on the digital tier one silver level of service. And if you have any questions, you can get in touch with Anna Lucy at chata.com. That's about all on the forest call. So it's seven fifty, and I would like, if nothing else is coming up, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
You want public access?
Nope.
Why not?
Oh, oh, you do have it on, Karen, oh, I didn't see it.
Okay.
All right. You have public access?
Yes, I'd like to, I've got quite a few things, I'll give you what I can.
Soon I have it, I bet you've been meeting at different times here. All right, I've spoken to Sharon quite a few times about the channel 194, it's been off almost seven weeks, and want to know if we're going to get it on, or what, I know it's, it's a long time, and I was on this committee before, and this is just, you know, seven weeks, I don't know if you're censoring, or I don't know what's going on, but it's been off for seven weeks, so I want to know if we can help her committee, or do whatever we got to do to get this thing back on or not, or is it just going to stay off?
Sharon, would you like to respond to that?
Dave has called me at least three times about this, and I have told him the truth. And the truth is that we had an outage due to the recent thunderstorms that came through. It affected the settings in our equipment, which is highly technical digital equipment that was purchased two years ago. We are a committee of three people. We found out that our maintenance contract for this, our service contract has expired. We need to meet and negotiate a new service contract with Telview, so that we can have somebody come out and show us how to reset. We have a meeting coming up, it hasn't been posted yet, but it is coming up, at which we will make that decision, contact Telview, and get that transaction done. But until that happens, we cannot get back in the air, and I have told Dave this three times. And there is no censorship involved, there is no deliberate withholding of the channel. I actually posted this information on the Brookfield Community Facebook page, and on the Town of Brookfield Facebook page, because I did get some inquiries, and the answers seem to satisfy the people who responded. That's where things stand now.
Thank you, Sharon.
So Sharon, when do you think it's going to be up and running?
And Dave, I've told you this before, and I've told you it depends.
I'm asking you again.
I'm the chairman.
When do you think it'll be up and running?
It's time to move on, Dave, you've asked, she just said that you've called us three times.
I know, but I'm just, okay, I'll talk to her after.
Not till.
Again. All right, thanks, Sharon. Okay, next subject. Okay, tires on Lake Road. We had a bunch of us, we went down there, and we pulled a whole bunch out, quite a few, and we're going to do it again. We're going to do the other side of the road this time, so I'm going to let, let the highway department know when we're going to do it, so they don't sit out there for two, three days like they did before. We're not going to pick up any trash, we're just going to pick up inside, inside probably maybe ten feet, twenty feet in, whatever's there. And we're going to start from one end and go down probably maybe to the Oakham Farm boundary.
You mean personally you're doing this?
Well, me and a bunch of other people, yeah, we, we did this two weeks ago, two other gentlemen, and me and a couple other people, we pulled as many as we could out. So we're going to do it again, probably another week, as soon as I get more time here. We're going to go probably, like I said, a little further than the ten or twenty feet in. So, and I'll notify, like I said, the highway, and I'll let the, the police, let, you know, let them notify them as well of what we're doing, and when we're doing it, so you'll know about it, okay? We will not be picking up trash, though, only, only, anything that's big, you know, so I'm going to notify you on that. Trees on High Street, what are we doing?
Haven't we discussed this one before?
I'm bringing it up again, I saw the highway superintendent marking trees on Allen Road today. I stopped and spoke to him, and he told me if it had green leaves on it, that he wasn't going to cut it, but the tree he was marking had green leaves on it, it was kind of funny. So the trees on High Street and Draper Street are very hazardous, so. Are you, do you have any money left?
Well, he was just asking for additional money, because he had a whole list of trees.
Right, but do you have any money left right now, or?
That would be a question we have to find out from the town council.
Okay, all right, well, one of them.
Highway, we have money, well, who?
Cindy.
Yeah, we'll have to ask Cindy, because if they're asking for additional money, I don't think they might have.
Okay.
Well, no, it's just he's, he's projected that he'll run out, but I don't think he's out yet.
So Cindy would be the one to ask.
Okay, I'm just, because there's, like I said, there's pedestrians and residents near these trees, so, I mean, I've seen other trees being cut, they're not.
What, on Draper and Hyde, does he have any?
He has Draper and Hyde.
Sharon, remember when you called and asked me to ask them about that, I did, and I gave you the ransom, one was that there wasn't any.
No money, that's right.
One was that the tree, the, the, the leaves on it, so nothing was going to be done with that one, and the other one was that there wasn't any money.
And I just drove up Allen Road today, and I saw the trees that were marked, and while some of them may have had green leaves, the amount of lean on some of those trees, I was sitting there going, hey, are we going to do something about that? And I look, and there's like a red dot on it.
That, that's my, that's my point on, just because it got green leaves doesn't mean.
Right, no, I get it, okay.
I'm just, I'm just, if you go up and look at them yourself, you'll see that the shoulder on one on High Street is really dangerous.
Right, so there's, there are, there are trees identified on both, on both of those roads.
Okay.
A high-end rate.
You got them both, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, now, just, I'm just making sure, that's all I'm, that's all I'm doing.
I don't know that they're the same ones, but I'm presuming that it's the same ones, so.
It is, okay. All right, very good, all right, thank you.
Now, I want the motion to adjourn at, um.
I know when that signs in.
You have second to?
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty, second fifty-seven.
I know when that always signs in.
Motion to adjourn at seven fifty-seven.
You have that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.